Good afternoon, everybody. This is the town of Dewey Beach, monthly town council in a public hearing as well as meeting. It's being held at the Dewey Beach lifesaving station as well as via Zoom. Today is Friday, December 20th, 2024, and it's 3:00. That I'd like to open the meeting and convene it first with a pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. The next will be roll call. Commissioner Juzinski.
President.
Commissioner Gibbons.
President.
Commissioner Persinger.
Here.
Commissioner Bauer.
President.
Mayor Bill Stevens here, we're also our town council, town manager, and chief of police up on the front. Next item is item D, adoption of the agenda. Before I ask for a motion to adopt the agenda, I'd just like to note that we'd like to move E up to C and then drop them all down so that the resolution associated with trash would be right after the financial savings. No one has an issue with that?
No.
And the motion?
Motion to approve the modified agenda.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion for the approval of the minutes?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public comment.
For an non-agenda item.
Give me that look.
It's the only look I got.
Steve Montgomery with the Dewey Business Partnership. I just got this today, so I wanted to share it. I know the town manager's going to bring it up. The Dewey ball drop we've done the last several years, and when the weather's not four degrees, we get four, five, 600 people out there. When it's four degrees, we get four people out there. Hopefully, we have a nice New Year's. Dewey's certainly a big New Year's town these days. Even this year, being on a Tuesday night, it's a little more difficult, but we'll see. But in the spirit of this year and all the media, we're changing it to the Dewey Crush Drop. Our mate has got a mic, has built a five-foot, three-foot, four-foot round Dewey Crush cup, the straw out of the middle of it. Firetruck and Scott from Light Action's going to light it up big, and we just thought it was more fun, more Dewey-like. And I've told Chris Roush, I expect Cape Gazette to be that, be the front-page picture of the paper of New Year's, is the Dewey Crush Drop. That and the Winter Gala is officially sold out as of today. We raised the price $25, still sold it out in roughly three weeks because we started right after Thanksgiving. So it's going to be another great event.
Thank you, Dewey Business Partnership.
Kate, anybody on Zoom for public comment?
There's a couple people in waiting room. They've not said anything yet.
For those in the waiting room, if you'd like to come in, please let Kate know from a public comment perspective. With that, I'll leave it open in case someone does come in. But let's move on to number two reports, committee reports. Commissioner Bauer?
Finance committee met on Monday, so it was a good start, and we're going to have some workshops coming up in January, so for the public to participate in it would be great.
And the commissioners as well. Commissioner Persinger.
The Charter and Code Review Committee met a couple of weeks ago, and at least one of the items on our agenda is the result of their discussions. The climate change committee was scheduled to meet sometime in late January. I forget the exact date, but I believe that date was no longer viable, so they're now looking for another date. And the only thing I will mention is the meeting that I believe it came after our last meeting, that Bethany organized with all the other municipalities to talk about resilience and from storms and other challenges associated with climate change. It was a really very good, very good meeting. There's a lot of good discussion, a lot of good information that was shared about what other municipalities are doing and the kinds of problems that they're facing. And it was surprising that, you know, some of their problems looked a lot worse than some of the things that they were facing. But we're all kind of in the same bucket here, and we all got the same, or at least a similar set of problems. So that's all I had.
Commissioner Gibbons?
As Commissioner Bauer said, the newly formed combination of budget and investment finance committee met on the 16th, and some good ideas have been developed, and we look forward to continuing to work on them.
Commissioner Juzinski?
Infrastructure's last meeting got rescheduled. We have to spend the funds that our town manager managed to give for us for some projects. I don't know exactly what's behind all the rescheduling, but we're going to have to get that done.
I can talk about that.
Thank you, team. Next thing. Town manager?
Yeah. Kate, if you would, bring up those phones, please. So as you can see, on route one, the Dell Dot project's continuing. They started at the south end on the northbound lane. They're replacing sidewalks. Right now, they're working on the corner on Dickinson Street where they're doing a bump out there. And when they're doing that, the storm drains that are on those corners have to be moved out also. So you're going to see them go in and replace some of this storm drain piping to move those pipes out. And you can see where they're going to widen the sidewalks, like in this photo here, where the sidewalk's going to be widened. So it's a 10-foot bike lane. They're going to take four feet of that, and they're going to widen the sidewalks, especially in some of the areas where the telephone poles are in the middle of the sidewalk. And of course, that's the foot of their, well, Dickinson Street. Twelve bike racks came in. They've been assembled, and they're all out at the end of the streets. That's an example of one of them there. Thank you again for retired Representative Schwartzkopf, for those new bike racks, where every street's got a bike rack except for New Jersey Street. The pole that was knocked down, the light pole at Dickinson Street at Route One at Nalu by a vehicle, has finally been replaced. It was replaced two days ago, so that's back up, and the lights are working fine on that. The Army Corps, I'm continuing to email them and ask them about the project on Reed Street. They're still talking about this proposal letter report that has to be done. It hasn't been done yet. I've been copying the mail on some of those emails exchanged with the Army Corps, so everybody's aware of what's going on. I'm a little disappointed on how long it's taking the Army Corps to move on this. The Jersey Street project, so this is what Commissioner Juzinski was referring to. We had scheduled an infrastructure meeting to talk about the funding for that and for the Van Dyke Street study that we got a grant for, but the design for the Jersey Street French Drains has been completed. But we're looking for the cost estimate for the material, and we haven't gotten that in yet from a company named ADA. So when we get the cost for the material and we have the design, then we're going to put it out for bids. And then when I get the cost back from the bids, then I'm going to come to the infrastructure committee and say, hey, we got $53,000 on the CTF grant for that project. How much more money are we going to need to complete that project, both on the first and second block of Jersey Street and to complete the study down on Van Dyke Street? So that's why it's been rescheduled. The trash contract we'll talk about later, Mr. Townsend reviewed that for us. He's also working with Comcast on the franchise contract. Thank you on both of those. Town Hall, bids will be in on the 17th for the town hall, and they will be opened on the 17th in a public setting. When I say that, the bids will come in, the contractors will, or somebody will bring them in. GMB will be here with Dave Naples, who will be one of our representatives. They will timestamp the contracts when they're turned in. There'll be a record and a log of that. Then the bids will be officially closed, and then they will read the bids and the amounts in a summation. So that'll take place on the 17th. It was to take place on the 7th. We had four contractors ask for an extension because of the holidays until the 21st, and we thought the 17th was more in line where we wanted to be. We get them in on the 17th. GMB will scan them all in, all the bids, and then those will be sent to Dave Naples, Dawn Hinks, Jim Dede's, and myself, and we will get together and we'll look at all the bids, and then we'll come up with some type of recommendation for the commissioners. It'll be a written recommendation that'll be given to you, and then you'll have, of course, GMB and Dave Naples here to answer any questions once that's scheduled. We hope to have the recommendation done no later than the 29th of January. We want to make sure there's enough time for them to look through every single one of the bids. Remember, there were 13 contractors that came to the pre-bid meeting. That doesn't mean there'll be 13 contractors that put in for the bid, but we could, so it could take a while to go through those and come up with the recommendation.
Okay, so question. Is there any requirement that all of the bids should be made public?
I think there is, that they're all supposed to be read public. Is that correct, Kate?
I mean, you said they're going to be scanned, and you're going to be posting them somewhere?
I believe they'll be read publicly with the amounts, and then once they're scanned, I'll check to find out if they have to be made public.
So in all likelihood, they are public records. So now, if they come in asserting proprietary information of some sort, then we may have to evaluate them on a case-by-case basis.
But there's no reason not to put them out there, other than that, so they have full transparency.
There's, you know, accommodations tax, which is rental tax. That was due back on October 15th. We still have 50 people that got rental license that haven't paid their rental tax yet. We've, we send them a reminder around the 1st of October, then we send them another reminder around November 15th, and we're going to send them another reminder right after the holidays to try to get these folks to pay their rental tax.
You might withhold issuing a rental permit?
With that, parking permits, we're going to withhold a number of different things if they don't pay their rental tax. We applied, when I say I applied, for a grant with DEMA. It was approved for $70,000 to replace the cameras out on Route One. I'm working with the police department on that to make sure that the right equipment is ordered for what they need done to, you know, upgrade those cameras that are the public safety cameras out on Route One. So thank you for DEMA for approving that grant. New Year's Eve, there'll be fireworks at the Rusty Rudder slash North Beach, so all folks that have dogs that bothers them and anybody else. And also, we're hoping the Country Club will be having fireworks New Year's Eve. And of course, that comes across the bay, and you can hear that. That'll be at 8:00, the Country Club, and of course, the Rudder and North Beach will be at midnight. Minor lighting is the 29th at 5:00 p.m. The Dewey Ball Drop on New Orleans Street, as Mr. Montgomery said, will be at 11:30, the gathering there. And then the Dewey Plunge, the next day, New Year's Day, will be 11:30, right here on Dagsworthy Street. I'd like to thank everybody that donated toys, for the Toys for Tots. Thank you, Kate, for putting that together for us, and also for the donations for the dog and cat drive that we collected, and that'll all go out to the Brandywine SPCA. And last, I'd like to thank everybody on the town team, the chief, all our maintenance folks, everybody that works for the town. We had a great year this year, great teamwork by everybody, and we're moving the town in the right direction. So thank you too much to our team.
Any questions? That's it, Mr. Mayor.
May I?
Please.
So you've talked about consequences for the folks that have not paid their accommodations tax. Are there also penalties?
I don't know that. I'd have to get you an answer for that.
Because 50 seems like a lot of people.
Yeah, I don't know what type of penalty or trigger it is, but I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, or Bill Zolper? Not seeing any. Chief?
Hello, everyone. Happy Holidays. We've been conducting our seasonal interviews so far. We've done two days of interviews. We have another set of interviews set for the 30th. We already have 12 applications in, which is really good for us. We're still in December, so we're doing really well in our hiring. We are going to have to start our training in April this year most likely and do a lot of weekends instead of the two weeks. We have a lot of the colleges that aren't getting out until the week of Memorial Day weekend or that week, so that kind of messes up our training. So we're going to work really hard to kind of schedule and get everybody on board before then. We're gearing up for New Year's Eve. We'll have extra officers out there. Most of the department will be out there. We're also providing extra coverage on the 27th and the 28th of this month as well as the 34th, so we have extra officers out there because we figured the town would be a little bit more crowded. We, actually, we'll cover that. That's another issue later. We'll cover that. Let's go over our stats. This is for the November report. Calls for service were 517, criminal arrests were three. We had 218 traffic citations, and we conducted 272 hours of traffic enforcement. We had three accidents, 18 parking tickets, one civil citation, one DUI arrest, and I am happy to say we had no urinating citations for the month of November.
So proud of Dewey Beach.
Yeah, very good. I don't know how that's going to be.
Didn't have to put that on you.
The holiday weekends and New Year's Eve, that might change, so those stats will be a little different. Everything's going really well with the agency. We had our first awards dinner the other night. That went great. Dewey Beach has never had awards for the officers, which most departments do every year, so we were able to hand out a lot of special awards that the officers deserved. Everybody's doing very well. We're doing a lot of traffic enforcement daily, and they're out there doing their jobs, and our recruit's doing really well. We get a weekly update on him. He's doing well, so we're looking for his graduation is St. Patrick's evening, so that Friday. He will be graduated, and then we'll be up to 13, which is fantastic.
Will he be working St. Patrick's Day night?
Probably not, but we will need to get him sworn in that weekend so he can work. So we'll have to touch base with you on that. And that's pretty much all I have.
Can I ask you to give one other update? Because I believe we also attended a reading of one of our officers who wrote a book.
Oh, yes. That was so impressive.
That was great.
For Victor Lettenoff, yes. I don't have all the information on that, but that was outstanding.
Victor Lettenoff is one of our officers who is an artist first and then a police officer second, and he spent his, beginning of his career as a sculptor, and as he started his family, he realized he needed to make money and became a police officer. He, as he's gotten a little bit older, has also adopted the art of writing, and this is the second grant that he's received to be published, and it was a tremendous event. I was just really proud of him.
Very talented.
Yeah. Bill, do you have an update from the chamber, from Carol?
I do.
Okay, we'll move on. Third item, opening of public hearing. This is open the public hearing regarding ordinance to approve a conditional use application submitted by Keith Juzinski of Playables LLC to operate an eatery located 1904 Coastal Highway, Unit C7, Dewey Beach, Delaware, formerly known as MAP 334-20.18 parcel, 134.00, Unit C7, located in zoning District RB2, south of New Orleans Street and north of Bellevue Street. Juzinski, can you give us an overview, please? I figured that was you.
Yes. Good afternoon. So just like the mayor said, we're trying to convert 350 square feet, which is the former Berkshire Hathaway, to a Playables restaurant. We were previously approved back in 2021 to go in the old bottle-and-cork t-shirt shop. It ultimately ended up not working out, so luckily, this place became available for us. So we'd like to move forward and put our restaurant in that location.
Any questions, or counsel?
I guess one question. Do you need to stay open until midnight for some reason?
No.
You don't?
No, our proposed hours were possibly 7:00 a.m. till 8:00 p.m., depending on customer demand.
Anyone else? Anyone here for a public comment? Anyone online for a public comment? All right.
I just did have a question.
I already asked you.
Well, I know. It didn't occur to me right away. What sort of timeframe would you have for being able to open this, from the time you were approved to the time you would?
As far as, excuse me, as far as construction? Like, how long would construction take? We're hoping only a month and a half to two months of construction. All we're doing is converting the inside into a commercial kitchen. It's going to be takeout-only, no customers coming in the doors, you know, converting the large window that's there, I believe it's 80 by 80 window, to a takeout window.
Okay. Ma'am, just real quick.
Yes, sir.
Have you read this ordinance?
Yes.
And you're on board with all of its?
The only question I had was regarding delivery, because we do do third-party delivery. I don't know if that's included. We don't do delivery ourselves.
Like rideshare kind of delivery?
DoorDash, Uber Eats, things like that.
So what is the question about that?
Are we allowed to do it?
Well, I think the prohibition is against seating patrons, right? So I don't know.
I don't see why we wouldn't be able to.
I don't see any.
Just a proxy for a customer.
So is there particular language that concerns you in the ordinance?
Word says proposed eatery shall further be restricted to preparing food for off-site consumption via carry-out or delivery.
Carry-out or delivery, sounds like it encompasses that.
What line item are you?
Line. Line 61.
I'm sorry, after reading it further, it reads more, that's the only thing that we're allowed to do, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
For carry-out and for delivery.
Correct. Okay, so no objection.
Okay, all right.
Comment?
Republican comment.
Bring him in.
David, you can go ahead.
Yeah, David Moskowitz. I live in Dewey Beach. The applicant, I'd sent an email, but I just want to formally state, so the applicant asked for a 9:00 p.m. closing time, and the town actually gave him a midnight closing time, which he's abutting a residential area, and then the other businesses that compete against him are, they have to shut their windows and doors by 11:00. So to be fair, he's not even asking for that, so the time needs to be pushed back by at least an hour. And even if you gave him 11:00, you'd be giving him two more hours than he requested. But it should not be at midnight, so I would hope that gets fixed.
Thank you. Do you have any problem if we move it back to 11:00?
I do not.
Okay. All right. Any other comments, Kate?
I have no.
All right. Thank you, might be calling you up again. All right, with that, we're going to close the public hearing and go into the agenda This is discuss possible vote on ordinance to approve a conditional use application submitted by Keith Juzinski. Am I saying that right?
Juzinski.
Juzinski. Playables LLC to operate eatery located 1904 Coastal Highway, Unit C7, Dewey Beach, Delaware, formerly known as MAP 334-20.18 parcel, 134.00, Unit C7, located in zoning District RB2, south of New Orleans Street and north of Bellevue Street. Any comments from counsel before I ask for a motion?
We did make the change no later than 11:00.
No later than 11:00, correct.
With that, I have no concerns.
I have no concerns either.
I motion to approve it with that change.
I will second.
Discussion?
Discussion.
Why are we not referring this to planning and zoning? Do we want to say that this change proposed is not significant, removing, going to a location where there has not been a food service operation before, in that particular location?
In that particular, but they did have a salad place, right?
Salad.
Yeah, I know, but it's still, it's, you know, I just want to feel like we have gone through the process and, you know, we're not setting ourselves up for some criticism if something goes awry. I mean, that's the normal process. What the code says is that commissioners shall submit the same to the planning commission for its recommendations and report unless by unanimous vote, the town commissioners present decide that the change proposed is not significant.
I believe, so are you in agreement? We could do it if it's unanimous. Is that correct?
Yes, although if it's, you need, you do need to make some mention of it on the record in order to establish that it's unanimous.
I would say from my point of view, the fact that we've reviewed this in terms of as an eatery here in town before, when it was going to go in front of the bottle-and-cork, part of the bottle-and-cork's t-shirt shop, we had gone through those steps to have it approved. It's within a reasonable timeframe, it's in a commercial building. I don't have a problem approving this forward and not setting it to planning and zoning.
I don't have a problem with it either.
Yeah, I mean, because there's already food-serving establishments in basically the same location. It's not like it's a first of a kind. There's never been a food-serving establishment like right there anyway.
You have Woodies, and you have Deweats.
And we approved it right across the street, you know, already, so. I mean, I'm willing to say it is, but if you want us to go to planning and zoning, they have a meeting in January, I think, maybe.
They have a meeting, I think, January 8th.
Yeah, so I mean, the point is they have enough time, you know, there's enough time to potentially do it, but I don't feel the need to send it there, but any one of us can say it needs to go.
I don't believe it needs to go there, so it's up to you, sir.
I will go along with the rest of the commissioners and not require that it goes to PNC.
So Fred, do we have to vote and say why we vote because of this?
Either we need to a substitute motion, we need to vote on this, we need to somehow evidence that it's unanimous, that this does not represent a significant change.
Okay, so I'll amend my motion to approve it with revised closing time and that we agree that it is not a significant change.
And I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Being review November financial statements, Ms. Hall.
Good afternoon, Ms. Hall. Good afternoon, folks. It's the end of the year. We're looking good. Things are going very smoothly. Transfer tax is still, I don't know how, coming in very nicely. Accommodations tax is still coming in nicely. Hotel is not. Did anybody have any questions on the financials?
I did have a question, but it's not necessarily towards this. It's based on Bill's comment, town manager's comment about 50 people that have not paid yet. Do you have an estimate of what that would do from the accommodations based upon prior year?
We don't know how, you know, how many weeks they rented their properties.
With it all being based on an honor system, there's no way of knowing.
Okay.
I mean, is it possible that 50 people did not rent their units despite filing a permit?
That's always a possibility.
But they're still supposed to, I'm sorry, they're still supposed to fill out a form at the end of the time period and put zero in it.
And Commissioner Juzinski did find in there are penalties.
Okay, good.
I thought there were, yeah.
I don't have any questions from Ms. Hall. Hold up to counsel if you have any questions.
I don't have any questions, but again, I like the format on the summary, including the allocations to set-asides up under revenues so that, you know, we can see easily the net revenues and match those up against the operating expenditures, and that's what goes in the audit report, and I prefer to see it that way, so that was a good change for me.
We're glad you had me. Nothing, thank you, Ms. Hall. All right, as we discussed, we're going to move E up to the next element. This is discuss possibly vote resolution to approve the renewal of the trash recycling contract. Mr. Zolper.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I reviewed our current contract with Brian Castor, who's on the line if we do have any questions. Also had the town, our town attorney, review it. When we look at the service that's being provided and what we will be doing by renewing this contract, this contract was initially signed, current one we're operating under was in 2017. During those seven years, trash has gone up approximately $4 for your trash can, your normal, and then on the, and then for your recycle and your valet, it's gone up another $4. So we've gone from basically $27.32 back in 2017 to the new contract, if you do approve it, it'll be $31.93, and that's for twice-a-week trash with one recycling. And then in the off-season, it started off at $23.32, and now it's going up to $27.37 in the last seven years. Valet has gone up from $15 to $16.60 during our main season, and then in our off-season, it's gone from $10 to $11.06. I did increase, what I did do was approximately three years ago, after noticing the trashcans during the summer from approximately Salisbury Street down to Reed Street on the southbound side of the road, those trashcans, those public trashcans can sometimes on the weekends and busy weeks overflow. So I had been calling at that time GFL and saying, hey, could you please add an additional trashcan on those corners during the time period of July 1st through the end of August? They were doing that and billing us separate for that. I included that into this year's contract when you reviewed that, and so that is in is in there, so that is a little bit more than what we were paying last year. But when you take away the dumpster that we had at the end of Dad's Worthy Street, and we now have a very small roll dumpster near Town Hall, we're actually saving money with this contract for the town. When I say that, the public trash cans and the dumpster than what we were paying under the previous contract. My, my, now, my recommendation would be to renew this contract. And again, we have folks on from Cassila now who bought out GFL, if you have any questions, or any questions for me.
Counsel, any questions for Mr. Zolper? Any questions from the public?
No comments?
This is a one-year contract?
It, it has an option for one year, but it can go out to, I'll have to look that up.
I was looking for it. I don't see it.
I read it as five years.
Well, it's five years, but you get the first three and then you get the last two.
Was it three and two or five and two?
It was three and two, I believe.
I mean, I was glad it was longer because I don't want to be taking.
You get the last two if the first three years of the contract is satisfactory to the town.
Right, right, okay.
And then you can extend it for successive one-year periods.
Got 3.3.
This is a good term.
Any other conversation, counsel? Have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian. Thanks, Horace.
Thank you.
Next item, discuss possibly vote on ordinance to amend Chapter 1 and 65 of the code to clarify definitions of canopies and baby tent and to outline regulations regarding the use of them on the beach. Mr. Zolper?
Yeah. The town received complaints over the last two summers about folks going down on the beach early in the morning, setting up tents and canopies and not staying with those and then just leaving and then coming back, you know, a couple hours later. Counsel's heard some of those complaints. You heard from the lifeguard captain when he did his end-of-the-year review. And I think it's important that the, that tents and the definition of a tent that has sides that come down that you can't see through, those will no longer be allowed on the beach. I think a canopy which has no sides on it, a canopy which can't be set up before 9:00 without anybody being there are prohibited. But a baby tent which is 36 by 36 by 36 is the same that Rehoboth uses will be allowed on the beach. So, again, those were the recommendations from the lifeguard captain and when we had a discussion about the canopies versus tents.
Commissioner Presser, do you would like to add?
Just that charter and code also looked at this, and this is consistent with their recommendations. So, I, I think this captures everything that we've discussed and that has been discussed at the committee level.
Is there anyone here that would, from the public, that would like to make a comment regarding this line item?
I do have one more thing. So, understand, I've talked to the lifeguard captain. This summer, this will be more about an education for the public because we know there's going to be people that have come down and done, you know, been able to put their tents up or their canopies up. So, the fine could be up to $200, but that's not going to happen during this summer. We're really going to try to educate the public. We are going to have cards made like we do with alcohol. That explains if this code passes, explains the code to, the lifeguards will hand that out to them and explain the new process for canopies and no more tents on the beach.
Kate, anyone from the public? All right. With that, can I have a motion from counsel?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, next.
There was no public comment on it. It's crazy.
Third, fourth, I haven't talked about it. Next item is discuss possibly vote on orders to amend Chapter 93 on the beach to establish fee for beach wheelchair rental. Mr. Zolper?
So, after, after looking at the seven wheelchairs that we have, we had to do some maintenance on all seven of them this year. And then also to take in, in the reservations and then actually review those, get those over to the lifeguard captain. So, then the lifeguard captain can say, hey, we need a wheelchair on Dickinson Street, Carolina Street, Salisbury, Collin Street this morning. That all takes time and effort, not only by the staff in the front, but also by the lifeguards. And to maintain the chairs, especially at $1,400, approximately $1,400 apiece, we thought that it was reasonable to have some type of, of fee for the service that's being provided mainly in the coordination of the reservations that come in. We had approximately 140 that came in over the, over the town webpage this past year. The captain, Richmond, said he had over 50 people that just walked right into the lifeguard station and said, hey, we'd like to have a wheelchair today or tomorrow down on the beach. So, you know, we had about 200 altogether this past year. And when we looked at the ones that were done over, over the town webpage and approximately 140 at $10, that would pay for a wheelchair a year.
Okay.
I have a question. Do we have an issue with people reserving wheelchairs and then not needing them? Or then like not showing up to use it? Or do we have an issue with people asking for one of these when they don't need it? I mean, do we have any of those kind of issues?
None of those have been brought to my attention, and I'm sure Captain Richmond would have brought it if it was a continuing problem.
Okay.
Our biggest issue is if, if we, if we let them use the wheelchair all day on the beach, sometimes they take the wheelchair, they roll it over the dune, and then they roll it down the middle of the street. And the tires that are on these wheelchairs are designed for the sand, and they can get damaged or actually punctured by using them on the street. That's the biggest complaint that I get from the lifeguard captain.
So, so the purpose of this really is to try to, like, better reimburse the town for the time spent as well as potentially fund the additional chairs or replacement chairs as they wear out. Is that what you kind of think?
And the maintenance on the chairs that needs to be done every year. And I will say, two years ago, or it might have been three years ago, we had somebody in town buy three chairs. And I, and some of you are out there, we had a photo out here, and there was a story done in the Cape Gazette. But we can't always rely on, on that one-off like that, because somebody may or may not donate to the town.
You know, it's, I guess I'm conflicted. You know, if it wasn't, if it was a service that wasn't dealing with the disabled, you know, I, it'd be kind of a much easier thing to kind of say yes to. I'm just, I'm just not sure about it. And then combined with the fact that people kind of donated money to do this thing, it kind of, you know, I don't know if they were expecting that we were going to charge for it as well. So...
I will say that Dewey Beach is one of the only towns, if not the only town in the state, that provides free parking for anybody that's got handicap placards. If you think about the revenue that we may be losing because of that, I mean, in Rehoboth, they have reserved handicap spots, but they still have to pay for them. So, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a give and take.
What do my fellow commissioners think about this?
My only concern is a PR concern. If we can get the information out about what we, what supports we are providing. For example, the fact that we had the map put in down on Van Dyke. So, it still looks like we're friendly and welcoming, but also respecting the fact that this costs money. Yes, the chairs were gifted to us, but the maintenance wasn't gifted to us. And I imagine that replacement parts are not cheap and they're very specialized. And so I can see the need for the fee. But I want to balance it by highlighting the other things.
I certainly can see the need, need for a fee. It seems to me that describing it as additional staff time, and the staff are going to get paid anyway, so is that really a good justification? I can see some justification in terms of maintenance and replacement. But yet, it's not a lot of money. It's, you know, it's, we could have a line item on our budget that says, you know, repair and replacement of beach wheelchairs. Should we do that as opposed to asking people to reimburse us in $10 reservation?
I think we all have the same opinion on this. It's like, I felt so good when we were able to put that map down on Van Dyke. I'd like to see more of those so that more people that are challenged can get out to, to see the ocean. But any from one from the public?
I'm going to make this easy on you. Yesterday morning, yesterday afternoon, the Chamber of Commerce, the subject came up because the news was leaked out. It was on the agenda. And I approached the town manager this morning and said, what do you think about the business partnership? This seems like a perfect thing for the business partnership to pick up the tab on repairing, replacing. And annually, he could just work with us on a bill. All I asked, if it's, if it's 500 is one thing, but if it's over 2,000, to let us know so that we can kind of budget it in because it's not a big money organization. But, you know, the reputation of Dewey is so strong right now. And when I came up in the chamber and everybody was like, well, what's going on in Dewey? I jumped up and Vince looked at me and Jimmy texted. We all said, this is something we should pick up. The one thing that nobody in the public understands is that Dewey Beach doesn't have a property tax. So, you know, anytime we talk about stuff, we have to just remind them, Dewey's tax-free city, town, whatever we are. So, if you guys are okay with it, and I can work with the town manager, we discussed it for 30 seconds today, the partnership would love to take that annual bill.
So moved.
Well, that settles it. We got public comment?
So, but before we take any more public comment, there was some consideration placed on this, on the issue of the Americans with Disabilities Act and how.
I asked them to.
So, you know, the question is, can you charge a fee at all? And I think the answer is that you can. It has to be, it has to be reasonable, and it can't be subsidized with depriving people with disabilities from access. So, it's, it's not a black and white issue. There's, there's no law that would act. I don't believe the ADA would be interpreted in such a way that would say you can't charge some kind of a fee, but you would need to be very conservative. I think that town managers' perspective on this is that $10 is very conservative, and that's why it's not higher than that maybe. So, I, I just wanted to mention that as one of the aspects of it that has been considered.
Kate, you have a public comment?
David, you can go ahead.
Yeah, David Moskowitz, full-time resident. In August 2020, the town did an online wheelchair fundraising campaign, and it got at least $3,000 to $4,000 in funds. Sheena is actually the one who organized it. She wrote up the GoFundMe page. And Jimmy O'Connor donated, Gary Persinger, Dave Jazinski, you can look. And it's great Dewey Business Partners wants to do it, but you should also let the entire town do it to build up the money. That, I mean, that's the way. If people donate and it hasn't been done since 2020, all you have to do is put out in the newsletter, GoFundMe for wheelchair donations, and it'd be a much better thing. That said, in alternative, if you do end up charging, I would like to remind you, you usually charge half the price for residents. So, if you're going to charge $10 for the wheelchair, you should charge $5 for the residents. But it, it sounds like it would be much better to do donations, and the town would probably see a lot more money than charging.
Thank you.
Like the motion to not, not have this go into effect.
To table this permanently?
We could just vote it down, either or.
Is your motion to vote now or is your vote?
No, we don't want to put the fee in.
So, so tabling technically is an appropriate mechanism for?
Motion to table.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Dewey Business Partnership.
Thank you, sir.
Do we need to have any other discussion, though, about this in terms of how this could get formalized in some way? Should it be a line item in a budget that is funded by donation from the partnership? Is that something the town manager could just work out without our unwanted input?
So, we have several groups in town that do a lot of nice things for us. The Lions Club, the Civic League, Dewey Beach Business Partnership, Highway One, the Native, just a few. But you can't run a town asking for donations all the time. Just, I want to make that clear.
All right.
But for this particular item, do we need to do a line in the budget with the, I'm trying to learn how this town budgeting thing, do we have to, or can?
My only thought is that if we're looking at a few thousand dollars, it's relatively material to a $5 million budget.
It's real quick to see if government can clarify this for us. Will you be paying the expenses directly or paying them through the town? If they get paid through the town, then we have to have in the budget. If not, you just pay them directly.
So, if, if it gets tabled in Dewey Beach Partnership, what we would do is, if we bought a new chair this year, I would take the invoice, provide it to, we would pay for it. I'd take the invoice, provide it to Dewey Beach Partnership, and they would just reimburse us. Or I could have them say, hey, we need a new chair, and they would just buy it. One of the two.
I think that's the simplest way.
Ms. Hall?
While she's coming up, I think if you had a line item right now and you were trying to change it, and you, and you did actually vote to change it, then you would need to acknowledge what you've done. But in this case, there isn't a line item.
Yes, there is.
Oh, there is? Okay.
It's marketing donations. And just like the beach mats, when somebody makes an online donation for the beach mats, the bike.
Bike racks.
Bike racks or anything, it goes into marketing donations. And then, I can't remember the number at this point, it's 404 something. And then it is expensed down donation purchases, marketing purchases in the 601 category. So, it's, it's already there. It's already set up.
Once again, you're a step ahead of us.
I try to be, and.
We're making it run faster.
Commissioner Persinger keeps me on my toes.
Keep sawing our tongue.
I'm borderline annoying the way you can, you know.
Thank you, Sheena.
Thank you, Sheena.
Are you okay with that?
Oh, yeah, I'm fine, yes. Moving on.
All right. This is now on to the, the actual F here. Discuss possibly vote on ordinance to amend Chapter 1 and to add a new Chapter 120 to define standard and cluster style mailbox assemblies and outline the specification of placement and installation of mailbox assemblies. Mr. Zolper?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I provided several examples at our last meeting of mailboxes that looked like they were put in the middle of a 50-foot lot to keep folks from parking in front of the house. So, to correct that, we are asking that mailboxes be placed at least 36 inches from a driveway entrance and anywhere between 12 and, I think, 18 inches from the edge of the road.
No more than 36 inches.
Right.
Well, some of that language is not in there. You don't have anything about where the face of the mailbox would be. That's not in the draft ordinance, is it?
The face of the mailbox.
Well, you, you said no 12 to 18 inches from the edge of the road, which would be the face of the mailbox.
Yeah, I believe that, that's in the state code that the mailbox is to be.
But you haven't incorporated that by reference, though.
I think we did.
You said it doesn't conform to these, the provisions of this chapter. But the only real provisions you have are the seven, the three feet from the corner of the driveway, or some violation of this notion of it's a mailbox interfering with the safety of the traveling public or the function, maintenance, or operations of roadway or utility system, or that interferes with pedestrian traffic. So, I, that language is problematic. I mean, I don't think there's any real definition in the, in this particular ordinance. And, you know, we talked about this before, and the town was unable to come up with, I think, with only one situation that would actually violate that language, was place, a situation, I think, where a mailbox was placed in the middle of the sidewalk. But other than that, it's not clear to me that if someone, there's an existing mailbox in the middle of a 50-foot frontage, that you would then be able to remove it. And it's not clear that that is even your intent because it says unless it, unless the mailbox violates that notion of interfering with safety of the traveling public, et cetera, the mailbox assembly would be permitted to remain. So, I don't think this is entirely clear here. And I was looking at paragraph 120-4B.
So, what I was referring to earlier was that Delaware admin code of 7.4. And when I reviewed that, it talks about where the, I thought it talked about where the mailbox needed to be placed and faced.
It does, but I don't think that you have incorporated that language by reference. And Fred can correct me if I'm wrong. You, you're referring to it.
Right.
But in order to, to be an encroachment under that section of the code, it would have to interfere with the safety of traveling public or the function, maintenance, or operation of the roadway or utility systems, or interfere with pedestrian traffic. And again, I can't, there's, you know, if you have a mailbox in the middle of the 50-foot frontage, that's not going to satisfy any of those criteria.
So, I have a suggestion. Why not just add in 124B the word parking?
Yeah, that's a good suggestion, if you want to do that.
The intent is that we're not, as a town, losing parking revenue because someone puts a mailbox in the middle of the town property.
So, why don't we decide the word parking to 124B?
But is it your, you know, if you have a situation like that where the mailbox is in the middle of the 50-foot frontage, is it your intent to make sure that that gets removed?
To tell them, to, to. Send them a letter and say, you need to have this moved by May 1st to the new town ordinance, which would be 36 inches from the edge of the driveway.
I, I don't think this is written as clearly as it could be. There are also some additional criteria, like the exact location in terms of the distance from the edge of the pavement, that ought to be incorporated in there. Because again, I Because again, I don't think you've encompassed everything that's in Administrative Code 7.4. You've just referenced some piece of it, but there are some additional details in that administrative code that tell you. And there's also an indication of, you know, if you have the mailbox three feet from the edge of the driveway, there's a discussion in that administrative code about making sure it's in the direction of the carrier, in, you know, the direction of the carrier is going, so that you actually have the width of the driveway, potentially, plus another three feet to swing the car and deliver the mail and get out again. I'm sorry, the other piece I didn't mention was that the location of the mailbox would be on the far side of the driveway, in the direction of the carrier's...
By Delaware code, that's where they want it, so the...
So, I'm just saying, it should be in here, so that it's clear. I don't, if somebody wants to put their mailbox up, I'm not sure this is clear enough to give them guidance for exactly where to put it. The town would certainly help, but why leave it to, you know, interpretation?
Want to table it until we take a closer look at that? I would ask for any public comment in addition, because I would want to come back to this.
I also have a question.
Go ahead.
So, the mailbox is in the direction in which the carrier, mail carrier is traveling, which means it's often on the far side of the driveway, because they have the driveway then to pull in. However, many driveways in town are at the edge of the property, so then their mailbox would be in the next person's property.
It's town right of way, so it's not that person's property. I don't know.
No, if my driveway's at the very edge...
I know what you're saying, but that, at the edge of the driveway, the mailbox is going to be put in the town right of way, correct?
Yes, in the town right of way.
Okay, so, even if it goes past the property lines, it's still in the town right of way.
Okay, so...
But it's within 36 inches from their driveway, in the town right of way, versus...
But it's in front of somebody, it's in front of somebody else's house.
You're allowed to put your mailbox across the street.
Got it. That's what I want in clarification on.
It would have to be in front of their own?
No, if it's got to be at the far side of my driveway, and my driveway is at the, here, I'm gonna make this, this is my house, this is the street, I have my driveway here, this is my, if it's got to be on the far side of my driveway, it's now not in front of my house, it's in front of somebody else's house.
So, I think we need to clear this.
That's my point.
Let's tighten it up.
We could tighten that language up.
Let's tighten it up.
Okay.
Okay, I know what the intent is, I understand these points.
I do, too.
Yeah, I agree with 100%.
100%, yeah. All right, so...
I'll get with the town attorney.
To tighten it up in terms of the placement and the wording?
We'll bring it back in January, Mr. Mayor.
All right, is there anyone here for public comment that would like to chime in?
David, you can go ahead.
Yeah, David Moskowitz, full-time resident. I understand the intent, too, but it's very poorly written. One of the issues is that the town needs to realize mail is a right, and there's two parties, the town and USPS. And in order to get mail delivered, you actually have to fill out a form with USPS, and it's a whole process. So, if the town wants one spot and USPS wants a different spot, then what happens? The ADA, American Disabilities Act, also applies and should be incorporated in this act. Also missing, which is most important, is people have had mailboxes for 10, 20, 30 years. This is trying to get, like, maybe new mailboxes, but what about people who had technically grandfathered in? And there should be a process, including an appeal process, whether, I guess, it's the Board of Adjustment, but that should be invoked in this. And because otherwise, like, I believe Commissioner Persinger said at the last meeting, this town manager may not do it, but you could have a next town manager who just gets rid of mailboxes. And people have a right to receive mail, and to adjust it with the USPS requires filling a form, it may not be done in 30 days. Like, if the town sends you a letter, you have to call the USPS as well. It's not a simple process, and the town really should incorporate that and realize people have mailboxes for 10, 20, 30 years, and there needs to be that appeal process. And the Board of Adjustment, I would hope the town wouldn't charge $5 or $700 for mailbox issues, if it came to that. And then, just one last thing, is people have individual mailboxes, but then also they have cluster mailboxes. If the town issues a building permit for a cluster mailbox, and then tells you you need to move it, there's a substantial fee for that community or person moving it. So, that's also something to consider.
Do we need a motion to formally table this for clarification, or...
Yeah, I did, I'll go ahead and motion to table, but I wanted to mention one thing to the town manager. One thing you mentioned is you might want to, when you rewrite this, consider putting that the building official is the one who makes the determination. There may be a case where someone thinks that they have a special extenuating circumstance, and they want it to be reviewed, and they don't think it's going to happen, but they disagree, and that would be the appeal mechanism. They could take it to the Board of Adjustment if the building official is the one who disagrees on what it is, and they have a practical difficulty. An all motion that we table this till January?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item G, discuss the town's plan regarding Sussex County property reassessments as relates to Dewey Beach Beach Replenishment Tax. This is going to be real quick. As most of you know, the beach replenishment that each of us paid has tied to, I believe, those 1974 tax assessment rates. We all received our new assessments, and just as clarification, there are two parts to your property tax. There's the school tax, and then there's the Sussex County tax. You see, there's no Dewey Beach tax, as that was alluded to earlier. What has been told to me is that if you have a 1,500 school and a 500 Sussex County, you can expect a 10% increase on the school side, and up to 30% on the county side. So, what could happen is there's another $300 or $400 that's going to be added to your tax at the tax level. It is the intent of Dewey Beach to modify the code so that what we're collecting from everyone right now for the beach fund stays the same. It's not going to go astronomically higher, as opposed to with the rates going higher. So, we're going to look at it as level. If we're making $150,000 a year, we're going to make $150,000 a year the same way, and mathematically, we'll figure out how to make it equal for everyone else.
But just to, so people have an expectation, some people's bills may go up a bit, and others may go down a bit.
Absolutely.
But on the whole, it's going to be the same with total revenue.
Correct.
Just so people are clear on that.
Correct.
Yes.
Well, I was just giving my opening statement, but I'll be happy to take comments.
David, you have comment?
Yeah, David Moskowitz, Dewey Beach. Yeah, so I'm on the Budget Committee with Kate Penlop in schools. They have the right to raise up to 10%, but nothing has been decided. So, FYI, there's a right to do it, but nothing has been formalized.
We also know that this won't happen until next fiscal year, anyway. So, just as a matter of FYI. H, discuss a possible vote on a resolution to approve the purchase of a communication device for the Dewey Beach Police Department in the amount of $26,000. Chief speak?
Cliff.
Lieutenant Dempsey.
Mayor, Council, Mr. Townsend, how are you, sir? So, I don't know if any of you are aware, but for decades, several decades that I've been here, the Dewey Beach Police Department Dispatch Center has been operating off of an antiquated dispatching system that includes one radio and one microphone. The radio to the left that you see, that is the radio that we mainly operate off of. The radio to the right is what we traditionally dispatched the seasonal police with and communicated with the lifeguards. And parking, yes. About two years ago, we brought on Melissa Cardamone from Ocean City Police Department. She was a full-time dispatch supervisor there, and immediately walked into our dispatch center, and her jaw hit the floor. I didn't understand why, there were several reasons, but her immediate concern and her immediate identification of our radio system was, it was appalling to her. And I understand why, I've dealt with this for years, and we've gotten by. So, what we wanted to do was explore the options that we had, and we knew they were going to be expensive. So, we immediately went to Magnum Electronics in Dover, who is a state-sponsored vendor, and he introduced us to the Avtech Scout System. Now, this system is not the top of the line, it's not the bottom line, it kind of runs right in the middle, but it fits us absolutely perfectly. It's a very small console that can be transferred from our current police department to the new police department, but what it includes is, it includes four of these radios, which can be toggled through any radio channel that we want. Our goal is to keep them dedicated to the Delaware State Police, keep one dedicated to Rehoboth Beach Police, keep one dedicated to us on our two channels that we have, and a third one is going to be used basically anywhere else that we, our fifth, I'm sorry, is going to be used anywhere else we need. We've already purchased the four radios. The $26,000 that we're asking for is to complete the entire $156,000 cost of it. $100,000 of that, we have secured funding through DEMA. $30,000 we have secured through the Victims of Violent Crimes Grant through the State of Delaware. So, with this system, it is going to be operated by our five full-time police dispatchers. It's obviously going to be well above and beyond what we have, it's going to bring us up to the standards of dispatching. Would I put this in Rehoboth Beach 911 Center or the Delaware State Police 911 Center? Probably not, because it doesn't have the requirements that a true 911 center would have. But when we're handling 6,000 complaints, working off of one radio, in the old system before the CAD, everything was handwritten until she got here, and we've implemented the computer aided dispatch system, we have finally understood that we are well behind the curve on this, and we need to move forward. So, obviously, that's why we started the project, we are $26,000 short. I want to compare this to when I got my first car. I was 16 years old, my parents went out and bought it. It was a 1982 Ford pickup, I loved it, it was the best thing I ever had, until I got in an accident. I realized that I didn't have any lock brakes, I didn't have airbags, I didn't have, when I bought my new car, I had all this stuff. And, you know, all these years, we've been dealing with an antiquated system, we've just dealt with it, until we touched it and felt it, we traveled to Bethany Beach and used their system, and saw the capabilities. One of the most important capabilities of this is our connection with the 911 centers in Rehoboth and Georgetown. My most important feature that I see for officer safety is that when there's five officers engaged in a fight, or engaged in a very large event, those officers right now are required to reach down, pull their radios out, go to a different channel and a different bank. It takes 30, 40 seconds of them looking at their radio, toggling through all these buttons. This radio with one push of a button will immediately put Dewey Beach Dispatch onto Suscom, put Dewey Beach Dispatch onto Rehoboth. The officers won't even know what's happening, they'll be yelling in the radio, Rehoboth's going to hear, they're going to dispatch the resources that we need. Our goal for our officers is to keep them safe. In turn to that, we keep the community safe, and that's why we're asking for this funding. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I have some. First, thank you for moving into the 21st century and giving a computer dispatch system. I mean, that's...
Thank you for agreeing.
It's crazy, the first time I heard about it. So, the radios are integrated with the CAD, then? Is that the way you were describing it?
Melissa, I'll let you explain that, she knows some of the...
I can handle the, I can handle, they can't hear me without a microphone. It's for the...
No, it's for the public.
So, behind the scenes, behind the monitor, you have to have one of our, that, I call it a base unit. That base unit belongs in a police car, that came out of a police car. That's what we're using. And in order for this new radio system to work, we have to have, we decided five?
Five.
We have to have five. We have that one, we need four in order for this radio system to work, because the intricacies behind it, and the channels, and the operations, that's where the technical stuff comes into play. From what I understand, it's not necessarily the equipment that costs, that's the driving force, and why this costs so much, it's all of the licensing that comes behind it. That's what was explained to me by Magnum Electronics.
So, from the financial point of view, thank you, by the way, for getting all that grant money, a big help. Is this, are these additional dollars in the budget amendment requests that we're reviewing? So, are they already included in that budget amendment?
If the budget amendment goes through, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Hall, this will be set aside for this.
Correct.
Purchase.
But it's in there right now, correct?
Correct.
Oh, even without the budget amendment, the $26,000 is in the budget?
The $26,000 is in the budget amendment, we put it after this conversation, so that if we need, it eliminated.
So, that funding, the budget amendment has to pass to pass this funding?
Yes, yes.
That's what I'm getting to.
Okay.
So, ultimately, we got $130,000 in grant money towards this project, so we're asking for 26 to complete it. And we have reached out to many different entities that do grants to try to get the funding, but they've given us so much money already, they can't give us any more right now.
There's a comment that I was just curious, will we have incurred an annual expense of $26,000 going forward? Because when you said licensing...
There's no subscription fee, it's licensing for the...
FCC, it's FCC licensing.
One-time license, done?
Yes.
All right. Any public comment?
I'll motion to approve it.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Have a good weekend.
Next week is going to be so much better at work now.
Thanks, Cliff.
I discuss a possibly vote on a resolution to amend the fiscal 2025 budget. Ms. Hall?
Sure. Now, I've got it. Excellent comment, continue, Ms. Hall. Yes.
See Cliff. See what's...
As we went through this last year, we're doing a budget amendment, because the police chief and our town manager have gotten us lots of grants, and we need to recognize that revenue and the expenses. I gave y'all the test that I have to do, that nice little test, and gave you lots of information as to explanations on everything. I talked to Commissioner Jazinski, I've talked to the mayor, I'm assuming everyone else understood everything perfectly. That's a wrong assumption. Did anyone have any questions?
Just to be clear, and to flog a horse that's already well flogged, this budget amendment would increase the, I'm talking about the operating budget at this point.
Yes.
It would increase net income by about $31,000.
Yes, sir.
And that is after the new communications equipment has been purchased.
Yes, sir.
Correct? Okay, all right. I don't have any other questions, I think it was, it's pretty clear. I mean, I tend to focus more on the operating budget. Grant money comes in, grant money gets spent, it's kind of a, you know, bookkeeping exercise, as opposed to, you know, additional draw on expenditures to operate the town, or, you know, additional revenues. So, I don't have any other questions.
Now, I can tell you for a fact that that $700,000 for transfer tax, we surpassed it. The $825 for accommodations, we surpassed it. I don't know how much more we'll get in by the end of this month. I doubt much more, but, you know, for accommodations, but I'm sure in the next three months, we'll get a little bit more in. But that just goes to help us towards the end of the year.
Ms. Hall, I'd say one clarification on Commissioner Persinger's comment. I would assume that the equipment purchase would not be in the operating budget, but in the set-aside slash grant budget to the right of it.
Correct.
As far as the $350,000, so it's not, it's the equipment capital expenditure side.
Correct, sir.
Do we have funds, out of curiosity, or, let's see, do we have LISO funds that could cover that, or...
We have LISO funds plus the grants.
Okay, all right. I don't have any questions.
The chief and I have talked about the LISO/LESSO funds, they are going to fund some other projects that the chief is looking...
Yeah, in the next, like, two weeks, yeah. That one is already gone.
That's all I wanted.
It's gone.
Okay.
Just to be clear, though, I was interpreting our approval of the communication... Just to be clear, though, I was interpreting our approval of the communications equipment as a draw on the operating budget.
Yeah.
As opposed to grant money. I mean, the big part of this is paid for by grant money.
Right.
But the additional $26,000 is a draw on the operating budget.
Yes, it is.
It is.
I mean, the total cost of the equipment has to be capitalized, and you guys treat that as...
Correct.
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
I'm saying the same thing, just differently.
All right.
So, any other conversation around? Anyone here from Town Hall? Anyone online, Kate? Motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Merry Christmas.
All right, Jay, discuss the possible vote to refer to planning zone and propose ordinance to allow property owners in a flood zone to add one additional foot of freeboard with corresponding increase of one foot in maximum building height as an additional voluntary measure of flood protection. Commissioner Persinger?
Yeah, for the meeting today, I have a very messy markup of the ordinance that we passed, I think maybe two meetings ago, ordinance 846, where we increased the freeboard from one foot to two feet. And so what I've done here is I've added some language in the same sections that would do a couple of things. First of all, to clarify, I think the way that the change was made, we lost all context of the two feet, the additional two feet, being freeboard. And so I think we need, if nothing else, we need to add, let's just take Section 1, "The lowest floor shall be elevated to or above the base flood elevation plus two feet of freeboard." I think that's kind of a minimal thing that we need to say, just to put it in the context of freeboard. But the suggestion here is to make a change to say above the base flood elevation plus a minimum of two feet of freeboard. And then additional sentence, "Up to one foot of additional freeboard may be added as an option." That's carried through consistently through other sections here. And it would be one other change that would be necessary, and that would be to Table 2, the bulk zoning standards in all districts, to, scroll over here, add, where we talk about freeboard, it says, "Plus appropriate town mandatory freeboard." I would just have that say, "Town mandated and any optional freeboard." So when you do that, then that gives you an additional allowance in terms of the maximum height to adjust for any optional freeboard that has been selected. So that is the suggestion that we'd make. The other suggestion that I have included here is at the bottom of the first page, I believe it is, yeah. When we did the original amendment, we didn't look at Section 101-28B, which applies to non-residential properties. If you're in a situation where your property has to be elevated and it's a non-residential property, you actually have a choice. You can either elevate the property or you can floodproof it. And we didn't make any changes to the language here in terms of floodproofing. So I have a suggestion here to make it consistent, so we're talking about not 12 inches of floodproofing, but basically 24 inches, which...
Two feet plus.
Yeah, would be the two feet. I don't think there's any need to make any adjustment there for height. I don't think you have to go up, you know, another foot or anything. I mean, you can do that if you want to. You could probably flood, floodproof your property all the way to the rafters if you chose to do so. It might not be, it may not look very good, but I don't know if there's anything in the code that would prevent you from doing so. But I think we have to have that minimum of two feet. So those are the suggested changes, and I would propose that we send this to Planning and Zoning for their review.
Do we need to send it to P&amp;Z?
So I was going to ask you, do you not want us to do the minimal change thing, or you want P&amp;Z to...
It's the main, it's optional. They want to add another foot of freeboard.
I think because there's still, I don't think there's universal understanding, even if we start talking about freeboard and elevation, I just don't think, people don't get it. And if you recall, when we put out some information that describes what freeboard is and what we're proposing to do, we got one comment back from the public. I just think the more opportunity we have for people to think about this, what the implications might be, the better off we are.
One that people brought up in the chart curve, brought up the height.
Yeah. And I do think we need to send this through P&amp;Z, because while most of the changes are in Section 101, the other changes in Table 2, which is part of zoning.
Well, I'll motion to send it to P&amp;Z.
Well, any public comment? I fear there's a reason why you're here.
Paul Perna with GIR Properties. We're doing the Siesta homes, putting three homes there. My concern is, it's an AO2. The way it has been, AO2 plus one, so we're three feet to ground floor to be eligible to have three stories of living. Thirty-two feet off of that. The way I'm hearing it now and understanding, you're saying is this, the extra two, the extra foot is going to be mandatory two-foot and then an option to go and to add another one?
There's a mandatory two feet of elevation already. That doesn't take effect for another four or five months.
Yes.
But I was saying that as a property owner, you could add an additional foot if you choose to do so, a freeboard. And in doing so, you would get 32 feet from that level. So you would not be penalized in any way in terms of height.
I have one house in for permit right now. The one closer to King Charles, along King Charles. It's at the county. Hopefully, I'll have something next week. So I can, I don't want to go higher. We don't want to go higher. Maybe I can get another one permitted by April. I believe that's when it's supposed to go into effect. And my concern was if it was mandatory going to three, we're going to have two, so it'll be additional.
The third foot is optional.
You know, there was a time that if you...
It's a one-foot rise over the prior standard.
Right.
Yes.
There was a time that you couldn't think about getting a height exemption. The house for us, I had to make, I had to, I took an inch and a half out of the ground floor, I took an inch and a half out of the middle floor, three inches out of the top floor, so I could get some kind of gable. I don't have anything against flat roofs. I live in one, on Salisbury. I think the gables look better and more appealing for the community. I had to shorten the heights just to be able to get a three and a quarter, 12. And I'm saying, what can we do about possibly allowing us, I mean, even if I got a, we're going to give, we're allowed to have a foot, we're adding two more feet now, one mandatory and one optional, but still sticking with 32 feet? It's hard to get a good-looking house at 32 feet with any kind of pitch on a gable.
Yeah. I want to make sure you're clear on one thing. Both the change we recently did and this proposed change, the building envelope does not change in terms of your lowest floor to your top being 32 feet. It's just a question of...
I understand that. And what I'm telling you, what I'm saying, at 32 feet, it's hard to get, I had to, I barely, I barely got three and a quarter. If it was on the north end, I think it's a minimum of four. But I'm in RR. And that's what I'm saying, if we're going to, if, it seems to be okay that we can now for freeboard raise the house, why can't we raise it some to get a decent pitch that would look better for the community? That's, and for me, us, even if I got a second house in, we don't even have a third yet. You know, I guess it would stay the same since it's not up now, because it would be the two-foot mandatory then, where my other ones are going to be three. Two plus one. By the time we get that one in after April, even if we do it this year, it's going to be a foot higher than the other two, and it's close to the beach. I'm just throwing out for things to think about, and those heights do change things. I know there was something that, with steps, the higher you go up, it's a 10-inch tread that goes out. Like, for me, I put pools in. You go up, two more steps, it's 20 more inches into the pool deck. It's kind of how you, if it's, it could just be steps or whether we can go out the front. It just, it does change things, and we're already a foot to two over the 1% chance of a FEMA flood. So I'm just bringing it up for thought, to think about.
Fair.
And it would be nice to be able to at least get a minimum, be able to get a minimum. I mean, the way my house is going to be, I shortened walls upstairs, and I'll come off of them and go high. So it won't be as, it won't look as bad, just in a bedroom or something like that, or a bathroom, to make it a little more open. And I think that's what people like. I mean, that's, come to the beach, you want it to be open and not squishy down. That's all, I want to put it out there for thought.
Appreciate it.
Or how would we, the opportunity to go for a variance.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
So I have my charter in the car, but I believe there's a charter provision that relates to the maximum height. I mean, it's, it's not a simple thing to change the maximum height if it's in the charter. I know that there were efforts to adopt code provisions, some of them that they couldn't be buried by the Board of Adjustment, and I think we determined that that's probably not permissible restriction.
I don't think it's in the charter.
Don't think it's in the charter?
I think it's, I think it's just in the code, yeah.
Well, there was something, there was something in that code about requiring a, if you wanted to increase the height, then you needed to submit it to a, what do you call it? A, you know, a vote of the residents. That language would need to come out.
The height limit is in the code, it's in Table 2.
That's the only place?
I believe that's the only place.
Okay. All right.
Every place else, it just refers to, you know, the base flood elevation, freeboard, and then I think it refers to Table 2, I believe. That's...
Okay, good.
That's my recollection, but that does bear checking out.
We should take a look at it.
Yeah.
And didn't we also discuss sometime in the year, one of the committees looking at the step issue about setbacks? So that's already something that's...
Uncovered steps could apply.
Okay.
It might be, and I get my jurisdictions mixed up, but it might be that you can encroach with uncovered steps, but only to a certain extent. So I'm aware of a circumstance in Rehoboth recently where there was a miscalculation made, and because of the height of the structure of the home, could have been located further back on the lot. Instead, it was located, you know, at a point where it appeared to be okay, but ultimately the encroaching steps went too far towards the right boundary. What I'm online is, in 2008, we, Commissioner 101, obviously, voted to have a binding referendum on the 35 feet. So that's, I think that's how it came into being, what you're talking about. Yeah, that's what I'm thinking of. And I don't, you know, I don't care for that concept at all.
And I'm not sure it's still in the code. I think that may have been dropped at some point with subsequent amendments.
It would have been...
It all bears checking out, so.
Can I make a comment, Mr. Mayor?
Of course, Mr. Adidis.
Thank you. I believe it was also included in our comprehensive plan that was adopted in 2018 about the 35-foot height. Also, the higher you go on the freeboard, probably they're going to have to meet all the current regulations that the town has. And one of the issues that is going to come up is access to the property by steps and so forth. And what, in order not to exceed the five-foot access point and put out steps into the, not the right of way, but into the setback, they're going to probably either have to, if you're designing a new home, you're going to have to meet all the setback requirements, because we won't approve it if it goes into the setback at that height, which means that they're going to have to have the footprint of the house probably a little bit smaller, the more they increase the height of the access to the home. So I just wanted to make a comment on that. Two is going to be a problem, maybe, but three, for optional, probably would be a problem as well. But that's a problem for any new homeowner, not for existing.
Well, but it also depends on the topography of the land, too. We have a number of areas within the town that are, you know, already five or six feet above sea level.
Right.
So, you know, it may not be a problem at all to go up.
It may or may not. It all depends.
I mean, you can also have alternate, alternate designs for stairs. I mean, there's a reason you can't start your stairs this way and then go up.
Well, I'm just pointing out that that may be...
I understand.
So we need to put that on next month's agenda?
Mr. Adidis, can I ask you to summarize that in a memo for me and for Council so that we can look at it to see how we may want to address that in the coming meetings?
Absolutely. Will do.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
All right, this is to refer to planning and zoning. I think we've got enough information for them to go on and for it to go there, not for us to look at it from a maximum vote, so it could have a motion.
Yeah. Sir, Perna wanted to make a statement.
Do I understand correctly that waterproofing, if we're AO2, two plus one, but the ground floor is below that, but you're totally waterproofed, is that acceptable? Because that gives you, if waterproofing counts...
Waterproofing is only available for non-residential parks. It's not for residential properties.
Okay.
That sounds...
The elevation's your only option for residential property, according to the code.
You can have garage, storage, you know, that could...
Yeah, my garage is, obviously you got to come in off ground floor, but then you got to steps to get up into the house and down and that. But I was just thinking waterproofing would help, the height would be able to lower your roof and still have eight-foot ceilings.
Thank you.
Motion to send it to P&amp;Z?
Exactly, we have a motion.
Yeah, the motion.
Second? Second.
All in favor?
So part of the motion is housekeeping to improve the language with...
Yeah.
And then the other is substantive.
Closing of the meeting. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Jazinski?
No comments.
Commissioner Persinger?
No comments.
Commissioner Givings?
No comments.
Mr. Bauer?
Only one. I want to thank our whole staff, administration, police, and lifeguards for a great year that they had, and looking forward to doing the same thing again next year.
Absolutely.
From my own perspective, I hope everyone has a safe and happy holiday as we roll into 2025. I can't believe it's 2025. And just to note, our next town meeting for the Council will be on the 17th of January, and we're also going to be looking to schedule separate meetings for Town Hall in terms of the completion of the new Town Hall as well as the budget. So please be advised that those three meetings will be happening over the next 30, 45 days. With that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?